Start, we reconvene the meeting and I'll start with supervisor comments. Mrs. Flair. Okay, since Chris isn't here, I'll go to the attorney. I have it. SPL easy. Do you know where we're at with that? Any closer to?
I've not heard anything more back about WCI. I asked them again today about finalizing that because they had agreed on the form of license agreement for us to use part of that, at least the first aging area for some of the lake bank restoration or some water management work. And my response back was gee, this is nice, we've got this fine line, it won't be needed once we own the land. And then David called and replied back, so I thought you had indeed, everything was fine. My response was see the attached emails or my memorandum about what we need, whether your park assurance is and other stuff. So we'll keep pushing.
I know you don't want to hear this, but if you look at the news, you'll find out that the largest utility in California, Pacific Gas Electric, declared bankruptcy because of the.
Lob bars.
Yes, because some of their electric lines reportedly started some of those fires. And so I keep asking myself, are we sure that we want to get involved with that land where those high tension wires are? And frankly, except for having a place to dump some excess water, I still haven't seen a plus or minus, yes or no list of why we want to do it.
Well, I will say that they survived three hurricanes that I know of with no damage at all. So, you know, they survived Irma, I'm pretty sure that they're not going to cause a city to do.
Well, the lines aren't ours.
That's true.
The lines aren't ours. They still have the liability.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
So Tony, if somebody's riding down the path and we're on the linear part and they hit that pole and crash their four wheeler and get into it, would we be joined in this suit being a property owner where that pole sits?
They probably would, but most attorneys.
Would get it anyway because it's our path.
We have, and we have a water management facility, so they fall into our lake or pond.
Isn't that.
But we, they've done nice part just though we hit, you know, I know we have insurance coverage, but we have one's protection, sovereign DMT, that can always have a claims bill that could require a greater payment, but.
One other thing I was asking, is that acreage or isn't it included in the amount of required parkland for gateways?
Well, and that's one of the assurances, that's one of the assurances we need, that the WCI said that they would get Montgomery to obtain the necessary confirmation from the county that the requisite amount of park area was.
To get that 200 acres, to get that 200 acres. To get that 200 acres, we need that.
So that's one of the lingering items and that's, and that's why I sent that email to David that included the two memorandums that I had mentioned at the pass. Because, so that's, those are the lingering issues from WCI's perspective.
Mrs. Flair. That was number one. Right, that was number one. Okay, Mr. Guy had mentioned the street holes on the street over here. Okay, do you know when those are going to be built?
I don't have a date. I had a contractor come out two weeks ago on some paving work and he is putting an estimate together, but I have about five or six different things he was going to come in and do at one time. If you haven't just come in and do that, I could have our staff probably go buy something and help you develop, but I was just going to have to do all at the same time.
Okay, thank you. Have we heard anything about the apartments on Gateway and Griffin Drive?
Public hearing coming up.
Got the information, I think.
Public hearing coming up.
Saw them in the email.
Spanning it to 200 units?
Yeah, that's what he said, but I wanted to.
Hearing?
I don't remember the date.
We put the hearing date on our website. I'll send you an email, but the zoning request was denied by staff, so now it's going to the Fullmore County Commissioners. And they have, I think, 600 total multifamily units that were permitted in Gateway, 400 of them are already Gateway Greens on those units, so they have about 200 in that allocation, but they're still going for 280. And this, and they dropped it down from 320 and went with the 280, but they're going straight to the Fullmore County Commissioners.
All right, we talked about, about Batsy Corp. Okay, do you know where we are with them?
Haven't made any progress on it, but I have the folders, maybe it's at the top of my desk, so I'm getting bids and I talked to someone today about getting bids to build a couple of Naples.
Okay, and Joe DiSorio, we pay him $1,000 a month?
$9.95.
$9.50. Close enough.
$9.50, okay. Okay, and that was for a year, when does that year end?
Basically is up this month, I think, yeah.
Okay, all right. So are you coming back to the board with it or that's where it ends?
Well, he's going to come back on March 7th and we're going to do our last segment of district worker training and he had some follow-up to do with the board and that as the board decides to extend it, well, then it's in the future.
Can I ask something on top of, because it relates to yours.
Sure.
I mean, when Joe comes down to do the district worker certification, do we pay him for that?
It's just part of that monthly.
Okay, so it's part of the services that, as far as his consulting and whatever, okay.
I finished. Mr. Guy.
I'm finished.
Mr. Banks.
Hey, just a question. At the intersection of Griffin and the intersection of Stony Brook where the new roads are, what do they do, where the new construction hits the existing pavement? There's a little bit of a, it's not fluid there.
Griffin and Stony.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 82, sorry, 82 and Griffin and 82 in Stony Brook, where the, where the new construction is.
Gateway and Griffin.
Well, they're going to elevate the eastbound lane yet, about another foot and a half.
Well, so if you're coming Griffin to 82, where they've done the new construction, where the new construction and the existing, there's a little bit of a bump there, you know, it's not, it's not very fluid.
They want the final pavement down.
Okay, so there's, okay, there, I'm just, I don't know if there's a final lift or something that they do.
They have more payments put in.
Okay, all right, I was just curious. I mean, I figured, but.
And you're talking about the same thing, they've got Gateway Boulevard where.
Gateway, I'm sorry, yeah, Gateway Boulevard, 82, sorry. Just curious.
Yeah, I think they've got more.
A final lift of.
I'm pretty sure, yeah. But we can sure spring them if they don't.
If you could do all that work, but I wouldn't want anything passed anymore.
Wouldn't either.
Yeah.
Mr. Kingsley.
We heard anything from Lee County on either the rates and/or the fees, the charges and the true up?
No, I've had some conversations with Danny. We might have to make some adjustments in that scope of work or who's doing it, there's a, could be a possible conflict. And I've informed Lee County what we're doing, so they're just waiting to hear from us.
Well, I would think that the, the one question really was simple on the connection fees, how do you calculate them? If you're charging us the same as every Billy Bob in the county, somebody's getting reamed here and it's us.
Well, we, I brought that question up at the meeting we had and we're supposed to get a response to that. We also had a meeting with their assistant director today and I brought that, posed that same question to him about the connection fee.
Hank Perezco. Oh, yeah, Hank Perezco.
That's the only thing I heard. Well, I mentioned earlier to check with South Florida about lowering, lowering, over to the weirs, lowering that water level down. We got construction needs to be done, but more importantly, we got to get some reserve capacity in that flowway or we're going to have a nightmare in Pelican Reserve come June unless we get that new weir built.
And I don't have anything, so we've got six minutes till the public hearing starts.
One more thing, so in regards to weir, I think in our workshop, didn't we talk about submitting something in addition to South Placed Florida, asking for permission to, to begin construction on the weirs?
They told us until we get that report and they review it, they won't let us do anything.
I know, but I thought we talked in the workshop about presenting them the, the information.
No, we're just doing it concurrent with.
Yeah, and say we're doing the modeling, we're doing all these different things, here's, you know, here's our justification, our business case. If we anticipate being able to prove our reasoning, would they allow us, okay, look, yeah. And with the demo, hey, if we, if the data comes back and does not substantiate the work, then we would pay to reverse it.
We're just out. We can ask Danny at the next meeting, I think that's a good idea is to try to have that, because my whole thing is that weir too, down in the lower end of Pelican, has got to be replaced. It's got to be replaced. It needs to be deeper and adjustable.
Because I thought our justification was.
More flow.
Yeah, and to get in front of the potential risk that, you know, from rainy season and, you know, and another disaster. And I know that you had said earlier, hey, can we at least assess the South Florida management, propose lower the weir, lower the weirs now to release water and that's fine, but I think we also should say, hey, look, we're doing the, all the assessments and the, what's the word?
Modeling.
Yeah, the modeling to basically substantiate these repairs, but we feel like it's going to, you know, that what we've seen and what the data should show should allow us to go ahead and start doing this now.
If Danny can come back and tell us that the study is going that route, that gives us the justification, I think we should go in there and speed it up.
I'll follow up with them on that next week.
We're sitting on three minutes.
Three minutes and then we can start the public hearing.
And attorney, what you may want to do is we're waiting until we get to that point in time if our people want to sign up anyway, if they want to speak.
I'll just go ahead and say that now. If anyone's here and wants to speak on the public hearing, there's kind of sheets in the back that you should fill out and give to Mr. Schumacher.
If you want to speak, if you want to say something for the hearing, you don't have to, it's just if you want to make some remarks.
Just give us, here's a small signature.
Yeah, just your name and say your town and rate, sir.
82 built all six lanes, or three lanes in eastbound or westbound over to Lee, you'll be sitting at that stop for 10 minutes. That needs a flyover. Maybe the trouble is because it's not getting to height.
I don't. Very bad. Something maybe by July?
No, we're not on that very.
How can March be buried?
Yeah, we have it, you know.
Back in March, 84.
There's a war here. There's a race. I'll go with the. Some of that, it's a lot, it's a lot.
It doesn't need to be continuous and not stop.
They're pursuing their zoning and their other proposals, the water side.
You get to the very control. What, how much are you going to report?
County Commissioners.
That's where you're. Tyler County buried although.
Yeah, we've played a little.
I got them.
Down line going across.
That's the other one.
May I have that one?
Yes, okay. I don't know, I somehow am. Sorry about that. I put. Okay, I have officially have 5:30, so I believe, Tony, we need a motion to open the public hearing?
Yes, and I agree, and then we'll talk about the fact that this public hearing is planning and being continued due to make sure that we comply with notice and advertising requirements, but I would suggest that the board take any comments from anybody who's here tonight. And then if they are not able to attend the next meeting, I would suggest that their comments be verbatim reported, so the board will have a verbatim transcript of their comments when they do consider this on March 21st. And we've had this conversation with Dan Hartman, Darryl Parker, Chris and I with regards to the new notice, new advertisement going in the paper and so that we're going to request, if this hearing be continued until March 21st, 2019 at 5:30 PM, but again, I would suggest you can open this public hearing, take public comments and then continue the public hearing until March 21st at 5:30 PM. And then again, if people cannot appear again on March 21st, make sure their comments are verbatim addressed.
So, motion to open?
Motion to open.
Second. Okay, the public hearing is officially opened on, do I need to read, do I need to?
I look for consideration of an adoption of amendment to the schedules A and B, A and B, I've checked at one of the rules of the district relative to water, wastewater and irrigation water rates, fees, and charges for utility services and connection fees by adoption of a resolution. And again, clarification, there'll be no action taken by the board title, other than to continue.
Right. Okay, do we have people that wanted to speak, Chris?
Yes, we have three folks that signed up the cards to speak and the first is Tom George Farrington Way.
And does everyone in the audience, I just want to make sure everyone's clear on what, what is going to happen. We're going to continue this until March 27?
1st.
I'm sorry.
March 21st.
March 21st. So you're, we're going to allow you to make your public comments today, or if you would like to hold it for when we continue, you can do so at that time. Just want to make sure that audiences, that everyone's clear.
Okay, my comment is more a question on the first page of the notification that we received. Okay, it says basically, so a wastewater rate will be increased from 561 to 563 per 5,000 gallons. Why, are you looking for one single increase or are you looking for four increases over the next four years that would be grouped together? That's one of my questions. Can anybody answer that?
Yeah, there's, there's minor steps for this rate increase. There's the rates up a little bit every year for a lot of years.
So, so the first page that most everybody that I've talked to has read say, oh, it's practically nothing, 561 to 563. They didn't feel that that was a big deal and they weren't that interested in it. So I went through the rates and it looks to me like over the four years, you're asking for an 18% increase for, let's say, the homeowner, like you worked out an average homeowner increase. Okay, that's considerable rate increase to me. And yet, on the first page, you're showing a very, very small rate increase that you're heading this up with.
I'm looking at table on page three of four and it's 563 to 633 and my math shows that 12.4%.
Which one? Page three?
The bottom of page three of four, it's 563 going to 633 and that's 12.4% increase by my math, which is a little bit over 3%, a little less than 3% per year, which is what I thought was passed out to the public.
If you go five.
Yeah, if you take 633 and divide it by 563, that's a 12.4% increase over the period of 2019 to 2023, which is right at 3% a year.
It's at, that's a 3% increase?
Annual, year over year.
Every year.
Yeah, but that's, that's 20% over four years is what you're looking at, or 18%.
12.4.
It's 18%. Maybe that particular item isn't, but when you add all these together, all the different increases together, you will get.
I was just going back to the fact you were saying wastewater.
No, I didn't say wastewater. I just said the rates, the overall rates.
You mentioned the 563, that's why.
That's specific to wastewater.
Yeah, that's specific to wastewater.
Well, the 563.
On all of them, it may be, that may be the case.
Yes, on all of them, put together, it could be 18%. If you pick out a certain, something similar to the usage I have in my home, for homeowners. Okay, so you don't feel that that's misleading at all? That you're having 561 to 563, which is what percentage?
12.4% over four years.
But that's not what's happening over four years. It's over four years, it's going to 633.
633 divided by 563 is 12.4% increase.
Okay, that's for that particular item, but on the first page, it says what we want is a wastewater rate increase from 561 to 563. And that's not true. You're looking for five.
Is 561 present to 563 this year? And it's going to change the next year or the next year.
So you're really looking at, the way I worked it out, overall, if you group everything together, it's roughly an 18% increase.
If.
For take your word on that because I have calculated the other. I calculated several of them and it depends on whether you figure out, somebody uses 6,000 gallons a month or, you know, it varies a little bit.
Depends on your usage.
Yes.
And it's actually over five years.
Yeah, it's four years.
18 to.
It's four years.
Through 23.
It's 19 to 19, 21, 22, 23.
The rate's effective January 1, 23.
Five years.
No, but you don't count this year. 18, we're in 19 now.
Right.
Okay, so one year from now is 20, 21, 22, 23.
Yeah, but the 23 goes to 24.
Right. It's still five.
That rate is effective January 1, 23 and it lasts for one year to 24.
Yeah, but that's just saying, in the next, in the next four years, you're looking for 20 or 18% increase. So that, basically, because I'm not getting any comments here, basically, that's what I, I see. And right now, on the first page, the introduction page, which everybody looked at that I talked to, and they didn't look at anything else, they says, wonderful, all we're getting is this little increase. And they didn't even look at the, the rest of the document that showed that there is a much larger increase.
I have the projected operating results summary if you want to see and basically for 2019, it's 1.5% and then 4% each additional year.
Okay.
Under the water side, under the wastewater side.
That's for the, from the next year, another 4% from next year's, from this year's to the next, and then another 4% for the next, and then another 4%. So you get about 16% and that's what I said, that like if you took it from today, it would be about a total of 18%.
Sure, the wastewater is .50% this year and that will be 3% per year for that time and the irrigation, that rate is 62%.
Yeah.
It's gone from 30 cents to 50, 31 to 50 cents.
Right, so.
So, but this was all predicated to on a five-year capital plan and the operational costs, that's why there's that little bit of a rate increase every year, it's not just predicated on this year.
Yeah, okay, so, but I just wanted to make sure, it's, it's over four years, you're asking that you're going to approve this 20% increase. And yet, on the first page of this, it basically says, we're asking for nothing practically at all.
So Chris, I think the bone of contention is on this first page, either we need to call out 561 to 563 per 1,000 gallons for the first, you know, for the, the first increase of the first year? Just let's be clear, so it's not misleading, just, there just needs to be a point of clarity there.
And how much of that increase per year is what is increased from Lee County? Because I know that they increase their rates to us.
Well, they don't, they have not and that's why you don't see a larger increase because the bulk rate that we pay from Lee County water and sewer has not changed. It's insignificant, so the rates are really based on our capital and our operating costs. However, if Lee County does increase that rate for irrigation water, that would be a direct path to our customers.
And again, once we institute this rate, you know, this rate increase to meet our, our capital improvement plan to do the things that we need in order to maintain our infrastructure and continue to improve, we still are among the lowest rates in, in the surrounding area. So, yeah, it's just important to call out and that's, that's illustrated pretty clearly here.
Yeah, of course, we can't tell what this means, so that if we put the 18%, 6,000 gallons with all the other things in there, are we up there with the others or not?
No.
We're still not, we're still way below it?
There's still the proposed rates.
No, that's the proposed rate for this year probably, right?
No, we still.
That's not, but the big increases come in the next years. This year, there's nothing that, with the proposed, it says existing and proposed, there's no movement hardly at all.
That's because.
Right.
You wouldn't have that information unless you would go look at their rates next year and change the most utility rates.
Right, I understand that, I understand that, but, but based on now, if you take the, I guess you can't because we don't know what their rates are going to be in the future.
We can't project out because we don't know what the rates are.
Okay, well, I just, I just had this strange, this really didn't give enough information to the people, it gave all the detail, but it didn't really explain to them that there are going to be four annual increases.
Yeah.
Okay, and that overall, the rate increase from today to the fourth rate increase date is going to be about 18% or something in that area for the average homeowner. And I'm guessing the average homeowner, based on example that was in here. Okay, because I don't know what the wastewater, I mean, the other usages are.
I just did a quick calculation, assuming, and I don't know if here's a 6,000 gallons, but that's considered close to the average. I took the water at 340 and the sewer at 560, multiplied times six, that's $54 per month for 1,000 gallons, for 6,000 gallons, projected it five years ahead and it comes up 6186 and that's a 14 and a half percent combined water and sewer increase. Over the four year period. Over the five year period.
Five.
Yeah. And on that.
For 6,000 gallons.
And on that third page, and I understand what he's saying, it shows that rate increase at the front, but there's a five-year detailed plan, the increase across the board for water and sewer.
On the back.
Well, it's on the third page. It's not on the back, but that's really just size to be able to read it and all this information, that's why it's on four pages. And it shows those effective dates, you know, January 1st, 19, 20, 21. Put a note on the front page might help look at this, you know, for the increases over the next five years. And which, that's the way it's been done historically too, the last three times they've raised the rates, it's been that and then a little bump for each of the four years after for a five year.
We understand what you're saying, the point that you've made is a very good one that there should have been additional information, please, you know, get the entire pamphlet to see what it's going to be over the next five years.
I know, it might take a little bit more information, but I think the people in this community, they are interested in having more detail than this.
I understand, thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Moore, Timber Ridge Drive.
I just came to get educated. He, he gave me great education already. The other thing I just, what I learned and, and what he said is you have a certain control over the rates which you're proposing here. But then I also heard someone make the comment that there's another element that could opt later on coming with a charge of what you're paying for water, that you would then pass through to the residents automatically. What does that, what's that mean?
That's a bulk rate. We don't have an actual water plant or a wastewater plant, we wholesale the service from Lee County, the district used to own the wastewater plant back here, so they basically provide us a bulk rate for the water that comes into the community and the wastewater they treat by 1,000 gallons. So if Lee County came in and said, oh, we're going to increase our rates to our bulk customers, then that would be, we would pass that through to our customers.
Now, what's the history of that? Is that something that's going to happen?
Well, we met with them yesterday and also four weeks ago and they do not have any rate increases. to shut their accounts off and not get base fees during the winter or summer when they were here, and now they charge those people regardless. So they've changed a lot of their fees, but not, and the rates, but not the wholesale rate.
So I think that the point to take away there is, it's been almost as long as we can remember, when the last time that the rates have been increased, so we've been running...
All flat?
Oh, great, it's been running flat. And there's no indication from, from Lee County that they have any plans to increase in the future. So I would just project out, if I were to say the likelihood of the risk over the next five years where we have this plan for Lee County to increase is probably low.
Yeah, and that's the reason where you really don't see much of an increase in the water rate or the wastewater rate, because they didn't increase their wholesale rate, so that directly just responds to our O and M costs to collect the wastewater and distribute the potable irrigation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last on the list, Stephen Drisco, Summergate Circle, Irrigation Water Rate Increase.
Hi, good afternoon. And the only questions I have regarding the rate increase is the timing. I don't know when this was proposed, but it was just, I live in a HOA at Summergate on West Links, and, you know, it looks like we're going to have a $9,000 per year increase in our rates, and budgets are set, it seems as though it's a little, if we could have more notice, that would be one thing. And number two, if I did the calculations correctly, a $9,000 increase on our current water and sewer is $28,000 budgeted. You know, we're looking at a pretty substantial increase per, you know, for the community and certainly per unit.
How many units are there in Summergate?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
How many units do you have?
168.
What, we've talked, the issue is that in the past, we have blended funds of water, sewer, and irrigation, and we're now separating those out, and they each have to stand on their own. And the irrigation utility has been subsidized by funds from the water and the wastewater account, and it couldn't stand on its own, plus the fact that we've got identified millions of dollars of improvements to do to the irrigation system, the money just isn't there. So the irrigation had to be popped. When did this happen? We started talking about this back in October. The rate study was completed in November, and we elected to not bring it out until now.
You know, it makes it hard, as you can understand.
In a tax budget.
It makes it hard budgeting for, you know, the HOAs, number one. And number two, if, if the water and sewer has subsidized the irrigation account, is there some kind of decline in the water and sewer rates to offset?
If you'd have been here earlier today in the meeting, you would have heard the bleak story of our staff telling us about failures like over in Fairway Isles Drive. We're looking at $77,000 to fix a break. We've got a lot of, we've got an old system, water and sewer, and it's, we have no funds to take this kind of stuff in the past, so we've had to bump those costs up. We had picked the utilities clean, there's nothing left. So we have to start planning in the future to reserve monies to fix these failures.
So, a good portion of this rate increase, or a portion of the rate increase, also is for infrastructure improvements or?
Capital.
Capital?
Yes.
And that would be, the money that comes from the irrigation side would stay in that system for the most part. You know, we aren't going to...
You try to keep the irrigation separate from the water and sewer, is that correct?
Yeah. And in the last few years, too, we had issues with disposal in Lee County, having some concerns, but we've replaced all five of the high-service pumps at $45,000 a pop, added that variable frequency drive and automated controls, and continue to work on our wellfields and our supply for those. So it's a direct reflection of the costs for our next five years over the capital and our operation costs. And we try to keep it low. When we're spending money, we try to...
I have a lot of respect for what everyone does on this board, and I think this is a great community, and that we can stand, you know, stand proud as to how the, the community and the CDD rates against other communities. It just seems that it's difficult for an HOA to budget for this at the last minute, and it's a big hit for a, an HOA.
It's after your budget's already done.
After the budget has been done since fall.
But do what I told the ones at the master, HOA, Gateway Greens, have Mainscape go out there and throttle back some of those timers, cut the usage down.
Well, I appreciate that, you know, we're going to take a look, yeah, we're going to take a look, because...
Because you just have one, I believe, one three-inch meter is the only thing you've got.
I've inquired, I haven't heard.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, but I appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks for coming, Steve.
Thanks again.
And we have, we have had heard that concern from several HOAs because of the increase in some of the meter fees there, too, and, you know, they have restrictions on upping their assessment in the middle of the year or special assessment. And a couple of them we've worked with, and we've given them their water bills and showed them the amount of gallons that they're using, and said, well, you know, you could cut back 20% and save a big chunk of this money.
Are all the areas on the same physical year?
I don't know. It's the master meter ones that took the biggest hits, Casella, Champions Green, Hidden Links, Hammock Cove, Santa Lou's, the Summer Winds, the Royal Greens, and the Villages and Townhomes of Stony Brook, because of the way their base fees were calculated.
That's your problem, you get the sub HOAs, not the master HOAs. The sub HOAs like Steve, 168 units, they have their own common areas that he's talking about, the irrigation. And so they get burnt because of not spending over 1,300, 1,400 homes, it's a smaller deal. You get down to some of the smaller ones that are only 80 units or 48 units, like Hidden Links condo, that's a burn.
Just for the sake of discussion, is there, for those areas where they have master meters, is there a way to have a phased rollout? Because of their budgeting season, they may not have allocated for it, is that a possibility?
Do you have to go back and recalculate your revenues generated? Because it's certainly...
Well, I mean, revenues, yes, but I'm just, like, from a system perspective, is that even possible?
Well, the better thing to do it would be is, we should have put this on the street in November is what we should have done. We had the information.
Yeah, okay, all right, we can take that away.
But the one gentleman that talked about the percentages, I think that can be clarified, and maybe, I don't know what it costs to put this out, but somehow get it out to the, at least the HOAs, and let them know that the annual increase is not 561 to 63, it's 561 to 63 for the first year, and then it goes up to 633 or whatever the case may be.
Because this is, I mean, there's a lot of really good detailed information. You got past the first three sentences, you would see all the detailed information, but to the point, we could just...
Looks like that is con, is what it looks like.
Well, there's just, it's missing some clarification to add more context to the statement.
Yeah, and one of those lines, I would suggest is, I think that's a good idea to have that clarification on the first page, referring to the water rates will increase by this rate beginning, and just, with further increases in subsequent years is outlined in the address.
Yeah, I would call the exhibits.
Right, and the question is, I was asking Leslie, when the next utility billing is going out? She said not to March 5th, right? March 15th, can you up that a couple of days or not?
Uh, well, we, we tried, we have shut offs during that same week, so it's going to be hard to, I can look into it and see, but...
If it can be accelerated, move it up one more week, so if you can mail them out by March 8th, and that gives two weeks for the people to get them.
Or we can...
I'm just going, because there's a statute that talks about mailing with utility billing, and that's how this was mailed the first time, correct, with utility bills?
Yeah. I can't... We could continue it to the first meeting in April.
Yes.
To give the time.
Yes.
Yeah, we can't push up the billing because we have shut offs that week.
Yeah, I'd rather not.
Yeah, that would be, is just...
No, I'd like pushing it back.
And then, that way, this notice could be, we already have the form notice in the newspaper, we just change the date, that's a quick thing, correct?
So you're still talking about having the public hearing on March 21st, but not have the rates go into effect until a later date?
No, I think we can move, change the public hearing to first meeting in April, which is what I'm looking for, if you're clear?
Well...
Well, the, if the public hearing is on March 21st, the rates aren't going to be effective till May 1st.
Right, but this is what we're talking, we're talking about, sufficient time to include a clarified notice with the next utility bill, and still make it in plenty of time, not three days before public hearing, but like at least two weeks before.
When will the next bill be on the street?
March 15th.
March 15th. So then, the public hearing would be best delayed till the first April.
April 4th.
April 4th.
April 4th. We could do that.
Chris, are you okay with that? No?
Yeah, you know, if there's a confusion and somebody has a problem with it, I think the amount of information that we mailed out to everybody is highly detailed, and I understand, maybe we should have a place mark for saying five years, but it's an introduction, and there's a lot of information going in here, but we can do it if it's a...
From my perspective, to avoid any issues down the road, I think the fact that we only talked about 11 days.
What the other thing, too, is, is it still, is there any reason why it's still going to go into effect May 1st?
No.
Still going to affect May 1st?
Yeah, we're not impacting our... We're not going to live date, we're just impacting the hearing.
Yeah, and giving everybody the opportunity to respond.
So the hearing date would be April 4th?
Yeah.
Or with the May effective date for the rates?
It's going to be May 1st. Yeah, except for the connection fee, which is 90 days after we publish, so that just gets twisted back to, I don't have a problem with that.
And so we would just add a sentence of clarification, that these rates are for the first year only, to see the additional year's rates.
Right, and that's why page one and two were specifically titled 2019, and then three and four are giving you the five-year term.
But then, even a statement that says to see the five-year rates, please refer to page three, or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
A total percentage.
Then we can clarify the effective dates also, so...
Yeah, and I can add the day that we have here, that, you know, just a little summary on that first page, it shows, you know, it's 4% per year, 3% on the other side, 60 more in the irrigation.
And just put the word amended on the top for people when they get this on the paperwork.
So with that, I guess we need a motion to...
Continue the public hearing?
Till April 4th.
Yes.
And 5...
At 5:30 PM.
5:30.
Is that the time of war we should stay out until 5:30?
Well, that's convenient for people that work to get here, so that's, I go with that. I'll make that motion.
Okay. Okay, you have a motion and a second, all in there?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ma'am Chairman, I was...
Continuation.
Yes, I was against also the directions to Maryland, that, again, the gentleman that spoke today all had the record, the comments made are verbatim, so in case I can't make your full report, just get them to say something.
Thanks for coming in. Thank you.
See you in a couple of weeks.
So, we can adjourn.
Yes.
So...